Thank you everybody in person and in line for coming tonight. Devin, turn it over to you.
All right, I'd like to ask for consent motion for item one zero three. To approve September ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular board meeting agenda.
Any questions? Do you have seconds?
Yes.
Yeah, there's many people on the down.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I'm checking on the Zoom link here. Little issue there. You got a second? Any comments, questions? Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? So.
I'd like to ask for consent motion on item one point zero four approval of the regular board meeting minutes. To approve the August nineteenth to two thousand or twenty twenty-four regular board meeting minutes.
Yeah.
You have a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. So approved.
And I'd like to ask for consent motion for item one point zero five. Approval of special board meeting minutes. To approve the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. No comments, questions, all in favor? Any opposed? So. Yeah, welcome back.
Happy first full week, everybody. The musical has officially started full rehearsals for our fall production of Naomiya. The show will be on November fifteenth and sixteenth, so stay tuned for ticket sales. Our student councils have had their first meetings today. We began planning our homecoming spirit week and pep assemblies as well as our fall homecoming dance. Mrs. Harvey is currently holding signups for the glow with your hands event. Put on in collaboration with the Glow Region Chamber of Commerce. Students in grades nine and ten will be immersed in the skilled trades field with hands-on activities and events with employers from our area. The goal is to allow students the opportunity to try their hand at these high-demand careers that students can apply right out of high school. For the Spirit Walk, September night fourteen. And JHS will be the tour guides for the lantern walk through the cemetery. On Thursday, if you're driving around through the village at around two fifteen, you may see some school buses. Every year, the Yearbook Club organizes the group senior photo. And this year, our senior class has voted to have our picture taken by the mural. Honk if you drive by. We'll outside away.
They will.
So over the weekend, our football team won their first game of the season. And cross-country dash in the dark went really well, even in the rain that they had. Girls varsity soccer won their game this past weekend. And for tonight, girls modified soccer is away is home versus York Pavilion. Boys JV soccer is away at Hornell. And varsity volleyball is versus Keshqua in Keshqua. And for the second time, boys varsity soccer has been canceled due to rainstorms. Any questions?
As usual, well done.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be back, even though it's my final year.
Thanks. So we have a what a tag team and the superintendent's report tonight. John Hunter, welcome. I'll let you decide who speaks first.
Okay, here we go. Uh, we've got about three or four things and we're going to move quickly through them just as background information. And an update on our few first few days here in the district. Uh, but before we start with these updates, I want to thank the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, to serve you, to serve our faculty, and most of all, to serve our students. This is a special place for me, and I should just leave it as this is a special place. Uh, and to be here and to do good work with you and with our faculty and with our students is something that I'm looking forward to. So thank you for that opportunity. Next, let's talk a little bit about that work that we've been doing. And people have rolled up their sleeves and they've been going at it.
Yeah, we had a terrific start to the school year. And that's directly related to all the quality work. From the drivers to the cafeteria workers to the custodians, the office staff. Teachers across all grade levels. Megan and Craig, who have done a terrific job as well. The mint team. To see exciting faces walk through our doors and students, and that's what it's all about. I can't thank everybody enough for all their efforts. From getting all those students here to school in a timely manner and also getting them home in a timely manner. And everybody was fed. It was just a terrific start. There were some special parts of the day, a local community agency greeting staff and students. Anyone else that wanted one, free donut. So that's always a good start to the day. Our entire staff wore blue, go blue. And that was just seeing the blue and white throughout the school and everyone being part of one was just really a special thing to see. In the middle school, high school, you'll see gold blue signage throughout the building. And again, the work of our climate and culture committee led by Mr. Veely. Mrs. New just and Mrs. Curly, they just did a great job of brightening up the hallways. And that's certainly a very appealing thing for students, parents, and visitors to our building. The signage just reminds students of our six traits and core values. And we're hoping each and every day that the more we practice that, the more it becomes routine and normal for our students. To meet our expectations, which we have set for many years now here at GCS. Then we brought all the students together. We had a high school one, grades nine through twelve for an assembly. Which just goes over some reminders about the upcoming school year, but more importantly, about the excitement of how staff is here to support you in this journey through your high school and middle school years. Follow them with a middle school one. We even already completed our first senior sunrise, which was well-attended by the seniors. It's amazing how early they get up, especially the first week of school. That's not easy. But they all did it and they're very enthusiastic about their final year here at Geneseo. And we're hoping to make this just a remarkable year for those students and a memorable year. In the elementary, I believe this is the first time we've had this done. This new really created a back-to-school community meet and greet. There were local organizations with resources for families, community, come visit, meet with teachers. The staff in the elementary was absolutely incredible, meeting with families, making them feel warm, welcome, and supported. And and that's what any parent would want. So they did a remarkable job with that. They brighten up their hallways a little bit, too. We have sensory pass down in the elementary. I didn't know what that was at first. But after that explained to me, just again, a nice field to the building. And and having that comfort level in adults as well as students is just so important for our success. Having a productive and positive school year. So I want to thank everybody here for all their efforts and we couldn't do it without all the staff that's they're in the trenches, they're doing the daily work. But they came with the highest amount of energy and passion for learning. And that will directly correlate to a successful school year. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
So I'm going to jump to a project update. And we have some slides if we can click that on for the board. There we go. So the purpose of this review is at just about every meeting now, we're going to talk a little bit about the project and share with people the basic information about the project. And we'll continue to get information out as we move forward towards that vote date on October eighth. These are some of the key facts. Board members, please stop and ask any questions at any point in time as I go through some of these basics. So project vote date, October eighth, eight AM to eight PM, and will be located in the auditorium lobby. The project cost is twenty-three million, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. And we have already learned from our bond council that New York State aid will be approximately seventy-one percent. That's a very nice A ratio. To think about seventy cents of every single dollar in this project is going to be state-supported. Our local share is going to be in specifically at ten point six million dollars.
Question about the ten point six, is that including financing costs?
Yes, yes, it's all in. So why, why, why this project? Well, there's two very important understandings about the why of this project. Number one, important understanding is the board has listened. They have modified the project costs and the total scope. The project scope now is at twenty-three, eight ninety-eight, three twelve. That is a reduction of four million, four hundred ninety-one thousand and five hundred fifty-seven dollars. The board listened, they made the adjustments, and have put together a proposition that meets needs. But also is responsive responsive to the community and responsive to the budget as well. What are these project needs? Well, they're straightforward. There's instructional space, gym, music, auditorium. In-classroom space for universal, universal pre-K programs. There are safety needs that are built into this program, specifically at the front foyer. And there are needs to replace failing obsolete infrastructure, specifically the boiler and the dust collection. So when you talk about a project, it's essential to know what is that tax impact? What will this cost me? So this is a very nice grid that does a summary of those basics. And it takes a look at a four-year tax flow for basic star community members and enhanced star community members. And what we see is that basic star, a home valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year one, a tax impact of nineteen dollars and forty-three cents that moves through year to year payments. And by year four, twenty thirty, thirty-one, it's a ninety-five cent impact on those individuals. With those with enhanced star, the impact is also significant as it declines over the four years. For someone with a home at a hundred and fifty thousand assessed value property, in year one, there's a sixteen dollar and eighty-three cents impact as our local share. And then in year four, three dollars and fifty-four cents. Those are important to know because that's what it means to the community as we put together the needs for what it means for our students. Okay, we want to just close up with just the last updates and reminders. Vote date, October eighth, eight AM to eight PM auditorium lobby. Please begin, everyone, please begin to check your mail, the webpage for more detailed information. And then up on the board, you see that our friend Scott Carroll has graciously volunteered to be the contact person. And we know that's important because there are some questions that are specific that need to be heard and answered. So Scott's name and email are there as well for people to reach out to. So that we, so that we can make sure that people are getting the answers.
I have a question about, if we go back to the tax slide.
Yeah.
Scott, are those all in numbers of budget runs or are those specific to the building proposal?
That's twenty-three, eight, nine, and three twelve. So that's the year-on-year cost of the tax impact that that will hit. And what's so significant there, I think, is year four that showcases that once we built this in, it's it's minimal like impact because we have it built in. But those are year-on-year, and so those will be the total. But again, I think that's a good visual to really kind of showcase after year three, we really have built that in and it does not fluctuate all that much. So, but yeah, that's that's all in twenty-three, eight, nine, eight, three twelve.
Close efforts?
Yeah.
That's it. We're good. Last reminder from me is very, very simple. We're starting our committee meeting, so we're going to have our audit committee meeting, finance committee meeting, policy committee meeting, all those are set. Safety committee meeting is tomorrow, so we're rolling up our sleeves and going to. Thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Well. All right.
Yeah. I do have something to share. It's gonna look awfully similar to last year because the trip, the trip hasn't changed much, so there isn't much new to share, but you're welcome. The picture's new. Is yeah, yeah, exactly. So I just want to go through what we do, how we try to pay for it as best we can, and and so on and so forth. Click. Hey, wow. Water bottle. So here are the things that we do. The itinerary hasn't changed. I've we've got one small change. We're stopping in a different place for dinner, not a, not a big deal at all, so that's not really worth. So we go to the aquarium, which is probably one of the best in the country. We walk the Freedom Trail with a guided tour guide. We do some shopping and we stop at dinner at Quincy Market, which is like the touristy place in Boston. It's so much fun. Uh, we do a duck boat and we drive around the city of Boston. And we get to go on the Charles River. We had three ducks last year. Two of them had the best time ever. They were like, oh, my gosh, he was so funny. The one we were on literally didn't talk to us at all. So, but that's okay. That's how it goes. Uh, we get to have lunch at the, at the Boston Museum of Science, uh, which has a great view of the Charles River. And then we go back there the following day. And obviously, the highlight is the whale watch itself out of Gloucester, Massachusetts, a little small fishing village hour-ish north, northeast of Boston, depending on traffic. So they get to see a little bit of like, you know, what a small fishing village would look like in New England. We have a nice dinner at the chateau. Uh, there's time to swim at the hotel pool, which my kids asked about today. And you thought I would have given them like a hundred bucks each because they're like, hotel pool? But there was a whale watch, but anyway. Uh, and then we did, we finished it up with the Museum of Science, which is just, it's a huge met, so many things to see. We don't have time to see it all. And it's a great way to end. And then we are stopping at the spaghetti warehouse in Syracuse on the way home because the place we were going to stop at before is no longer in business, apparently. So we go through First Choice Educational Tours, which I know the band trip did last year. The eighth-grade trip has used in years past. Is that what the seniors do? Do we know the senior class? Yeah, see, the first one. So I know they are very well respected and they do a lot of class, school trips in the area, so um, they are very easy to work with and everything else. Thank you. So that's what we, the covers, everything I just mentioned. Uh, we get two coach buses, obviously two drivers. We get a tour guide. We've had Mr. Mingus the last couple of years, which has been great. We're hoping to get him again this year. We'll see. You know, it's up to him. Uh, we have two nights at the hotel in Andover, which includes breakfast the, the following morning, so Thursday, Friday. And then we also include, um, that we give the kids money for the dinner at Quincy Market. Last year, our fundraising went well enough, we only gave them twenty-five dollars. Uh, we usually shoot for twenty, but we had enough, we had the money to do it, so we wanted to give them a little extra. We also give them a T-shirt. I should have that on there. It's not, but they all get a T-shirt and a chaperones and, you know, uh, the special people in the elementary building that help us along the way, they get a shirt as well. It was six hundred and twenty dollars last year. I've not heard yet the updated because they've got to give me the numbers. We haven't heard a final cost. It'll probably go up a little bit just because that's how life is right now. I'm hoping it doesn't go up too much. But again, so that is, again, before fundraising, we really get the trip down to about four hundred per family. Um, and just in case anybody's in short, no one has ever denied the trip because of financial reasons. I tell, I try to tell the kids, like, I already told my fifth graders this year, if you want to go on a trip, you can go. You know, it's not because of money. You know, certain families do choose to not go and that's their choice and that's okay. Uh, we have teachers that stay, stay back and do fun activities with them. Um, but it's not for financial reasons that families aren't included, which I, I feel very proud of. And that's not my decision. That's been established well before I got here. So that's, I think, speaks to our community, our school community. Um, so through our fundraising, which I'll get to in a second, we get it hopefully down to about four hundred dollars per student, which is great. And when we do fundraising, it goes to a general fund. It wouldn't be, you know, Sawyer has eight hundred dollars in his account and Matt has, we know, it's all together because ten and eleven-year-olds only have so much control over how much fundraising they can do. And it's not fair on them if it's kind of up to them. All right. And I think I got one more, maybe two more. So that was a picture from last year's uh, what's it called? Freedom Trail Walk. So those, you can see the shirts they had last year. Those are all, those are student-designed shirts each year, by the way. So we do a cookie dough sale, which will start next week. Um, we do bottles and can returns throughout the year. So anybody who lives in town, you want to take your bottles and cans to the place where the old hardware store is, we would greatly appreciate it. Uh, we do the hardwood classic and a special thanks to the GCEF for passing that wonderful tradition along. We had so much fun last year. I, if you were there, I hope you had fun. We heard so many positive things. We're looking forward to doing it again. Megan's going to jump, uh, do jump ball for us this year, maybe dunk. Yeah, she'll coach. She'll be the coach. Uh, we do a couple of dinner nights out. Um, you know, uh, what's it called? The tavern is very generous with their time and energy. Uh, we'll do the Easter candy sale, which we pair with student council, which is friend brought back after COVID shut it down for a few years. Um, and then we get donations from PTSA, from the GCEF, from Coast. And and of course, the amazing people that we work with. I can send an email to staff saying, hey, we've got four students that need a little support and I get twenty responses. So we, we make the money work even though the, the cost keeps going up. So I know many of you have direct experience going on a trip or indirect from a family member. It's a wonderful trip, you know, seeing Boston through the kids' eyes never gets old for me, you know. Not to, I grew up in Rochester, so I can feel like I can say this, you know, they think Rochester is a big city and then we get to Boston and they're just flowing away. You know, so it's great to see them experience it. It's great to see them have fun with each other. And just kind of spend those last few days of the fifth, their fifth grade or elementary career, so to speak, together. And having so much fun and making as Miss New Lexicon core memories. So, um, we hope that we can do this again and continue this long after, um, you know, done and retired. So, uh, any questions, I'm happy to address as best I can. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it and, uh.
Are they, is the cannon bottle ready now or?
Yes, it's just kind of a, and they're great to work with. I forget the gentleman's name, but I mean, I literally am in there for 10 seconds because he sees me and he goes, just set him there and you know, yeah, so you're telling her for the whale watch and yeah. And so that's, it's, yes, an ongoing thing that's always, always open for us.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Like to ask for consent motion for the whale watch. It should be whale watch for June eleventh, through thirteen.
Second.
Are the questions ready? All in favor? Any, any opposed? No, which? You're up, running. So move. We have, you go find it?
Don't know it.
So, okay. Me? Yeah, all right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. And I'm happy to hear that the school year started out well. About a week, about a week ago, I stood here and watched five of you decide that Cindy Flowers was so ineffective that you had to get rid of her just before school started. That's really something. Only one of you came to that decision after being on the board for only two months. Which seems to me to be extremely premature. The other four of you were on the board last year. And you evaluated Ms. Flowers for her performance up to two months ago. I have her evaluation. Overall, three of you found that she had some areas to improve on. Not a surprise. I don't know of anybody who's perfect. One of you found her effective overall. And none of you, I mean, none of you found her ineffective. None of you. Two months ago. Of particular interest to me is that two of you found her effective or highly effective in the area of relationship with the board. Wow. All of you found her effective or highly effective on the issue of instructional leadership. Only one of you said she needed improvement on community relations. It's very difficult for me to understand that she did something so bad in the last two months during summer recess that required this type of action at that particular point in time. Days before the school started, the week tax bills came out. And just weeks before you're going to go to the community on a bond issue. In addition to starting the school year in the state of at least significant change, you have encumbered the district and taxpayers with additional financial burden. I foiled the school to give me information necessary to get more precise information on how much it's going to cost the taxpayers. I got a partial response and I'll be submitting another foil request tomorrow. What I do know is as follows. In most cases like this, the taxpayers pay the person you let go their full salary for the remaining length of her contract or until you, she gets another job. I doubt when you did this that Ms. Flowers will find new employment in less than six to nine months. And it may be longer. If all that's true, that's a substantial amount of money. I don't know exactly what yet, but I may find out. You've hired a highly esteemed educator. His name's John Hunter. He's a really good man. He's a great superintendent. He's admired and respected me. But you're going to pay him seven hundred dollars a day for however many days he works until February twenty-eighth, or unless you hire somebody before then. But if you don't hire somebody before then, you're going to pay him or somebody else, well, a comparable amount of money, and that's additional. You've promoted Mike Salatell to the position of executive principal. And you've increased his salary by sixteen thousand dollars between now and February twenty-fifth or twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five. Or until a new superintendent is hired. But of course, if a new superintendent isn't hired, it'll go on beyond that. Now, I don't begrudge Mike getting sixteen thousand dollars more because he's going to have his hands full and he'll earn every penny of it, so. I'm not complaining about that. You've promoted Craig Veely to middle school and high school principal, and I don't know what that costs, but it's going to cost something. And, and you've promoted an outstanding English teacher. My grandkids loved, worshipped the ground she walked on and has an excellent reputation as an English teacher. But you've promoted her to a vice principal and I don't know what that costs, but I damn well know it costs something. And you're going to be replacing your transportation supervisor and that may or may not cost something, but it'll be it'll be an additional burden on the administration of this school. And lastly, you'll have to initiate a search and a recruitment for a new superintendent, and that won't be free. That'll cost something. Meanwhile, while you do all this, we'll all pay our tax bill and get ready to vote on a bond issue. While you add these costs. while you add these costs to the school. Regardless of where you stand on Ms. Flowers' competence, your evaluations, your evaluations did not warrant this action at this time. Maybe some other time, but not at this time. Two months ago, none of you said she was ineffective. Incidentally, she wrote a rebuttal to all the things you said she needed to improve on. So just maybe there's two sides to the story. I don't know. I suspect there is. But even if she needed to improve in all the areas you said she needed to improve in, two months is not an adequate amount of time to evaluate her progress. Your action, the five of you, your action was unnecessary at this time. It reeks of extremely poor planning. It smells of personal animus on the part of some. And it creates additional costs to the district whose financial picture is like most school districts, not all that way. In closing, I want to be clear. These comments are directed only at the five individuals who voted to accept her resignation. I will remember and I hope others will remember what you did in future board elections. I want to close on a high note, a more positive, and say that I have the utmost respect for John Hunter, Mike Salatell, Craig Veely, and Megan Curley as educators and as administrators, and I wish all of them all the success in the world as they navigate through this sea of changes. And with that, I say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Bill. Sure, anybody else?
Sure, before you call the next person, let me just end it for a second because I want to provide some clarification to the people sitting here and to the people watching. Public comments are a very important part of any board meeting. And this board, like all boards that I've worked with, I know specifically wants to hear and understand the various opinions about issues from the community. In fact, it was public comment that led to modification in the proposed project scope and cost. However, please note that according to New York State law and the oath of office that each of these board members took, that they are unable to respond to questions regarding personnel matters. So when your board does not respond, it means they're following the law and it has no indication about whether they care. They care. This board cares. They're listening and will continue to respectfully and intently listen to all and understand your positions.
So. Dave Blair, Dave? Lawrence yours.
Right? Good evening, everyone. My name is David Guer, but you all know me. I've been affiliated with the district for almost fifty years. Most of the time as transportation supervisor and the last twelve as a member of the Board of Education. I've served at various times as board president and vice president. I thank the board for the opportunity to speak. As I noted, I have sat with this group until this past June thirtieth and I know who you are. I'll be brief. First, I'd like to thank the board members who insisted that board meetings be broadcast live and archived so individuals can watch them at any time. A very large amount of, of important information has come from this decision. Like so many others, I'm stunned that you would relieve Superintendent Flowers from her duties. This is an unprecedented action and I can recall nothing like it in the history of this district. And let's get it straight. Mrs. Flowers didn't resign and she didn't retire. She was fired. I'd like to quote a professor emeritus at the college who wrote to me and said, quote, "The dramatic change at Geneseal Central School involving the termination of a superintendent, especially just before the beginning of the school year, creates unnecessary risks and stress for both students and teachers," unquote. And I might add administrators as well. I was part of the board that hired Mrs. Flowers. After an exhaustive search, countless interviews and countless hours, the board unanimously hired Mrs. Flowers. During her time leading the district, I've told many people it was the best vote I ever cast. During her time here, she has hired some incredibly talented people, including faculty, administrators, and key support persons. Mrs. Flowers has an uncanny ability to hire the right people. Her evaluations have been stellar, as Mr. Jones pointed out. When Mrs. Melonbacher was president and I left an agenda meeting a few months after Mrs. Flowers took over, I remember saying, Jen, this is too easy. Mrs. Flowers hit the ground running and did a marvelous job. She knew her role on the board at the time, knew theirs. It was an incredibly well-run organization. And as I have told countless people over the last five years, Cindy Flowers and Dr. John Hunter are the two best superintendents this district ever had. John, I'm glad you're here. Things went pretty well until this past school year when the board leadership changed. Sadly, the agenda meetings were often difficult and there was decided lack of respect for the superintendent. Also during the past year, there were executive sessions where there was a lack of respect for certain board members and the superintendent. This lack of respect included outright bullying. In the twelve years, I've never seen anything like it and I was ashamed to be a part of it. As you all know, new school board members are required to take sixteen hours of basic training. Half the training is called school governance. During this training, the roles of school board members and superintendents of schools are clearly defined. Board members have virtually no authority outside this room. A superintendent by law is the CEO of the district who, among other responsibilities, is in charge of the day-to-day operation of the school district. Frankly, during the past year and even since this year's organizational meeting, I can't help but wonder if some of our board members paid any attention to that training. I'm afraid this board has become dysfunctional. The damage done by the action taken by five board members will be felt for a long time. Our reputation will precede us and I don't see any first-class administrator who would be willing to come here to be the chief school officer. One of our key school officials, as Mr. Jones pointed out, reached out to me after the August twenty seventh meeting and it, as a courtesy, explained he was being recruited by another district. He asked my advice. I suggested that twenty-four, twenty-five could be very difficult and that person should do what fits their situation the best. That official will be leaving at the end of September. I suspect others will follow. One of our board members called the actions really Mrs. Flowers unnecessary. It certainly was. I would like to thank and acknowledge Mr. Phelps and Mrs. Ellis, who have been disrespected. They understand how a school board is supposed to function. They should be leading this board of education. Those who know me, no confrontation is not my style. But there are certain things that need to be said. I am heartsick over this board's action, which in all probability will result in great damage to the school district and has caused a terrible injustice to one of the finest leaders we've ever had. I would ask that you think very carefully about what you've done. In any case, the district orders will be the final judge beginning in May. Thank you so much for your time. I left to copy my remarks with the district clerk for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. That's it? Okay. We know too many reports. No added finance, things not here. How is it? Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. GCEF? Okay. All right. Then I will turn to you, Kevin, for personnel consent.
I'd like to ask for a consent motion for item seven point zero two to seven point one eights. Any comments on any other personnel items?
I only put Sam Brown seven point one six.
Seven point one six. I'm gonna like to substitute. Do you want to say any statement now or?
Thank you. Mr. Ballard, resignation is included in the packet. He has given eight years of remarkable service to our students, staff. He will be tremendously missed. Jay has built positive relationships across the board. He really has been a great asset to our school community. We will miss him dearly. We wish him the very best. I've had several conversations with Jay over the last couple of weeks here. This was not an easy decision for him. He loves Geneseal. He loved being part of it. There was one opportunity that was of interest to him many months and he said it wasn't for this place where he's going, which is best for his family, his career. He would have been happy to stay and work with this wonderful community. So, uh, we will miss him. He is really a terrific human being that did great work for our district. But we would like to wish him the very best on behalf of all the students, staff, and administration here at PCS.
Yeah, I clearly echo the sentiment too, having also talked to Jay and he was certainly that he missed and we have to wish him well in his next endeavor. Thank you. We also certainly want to extend the same level of, uh, thank to, um, Aaron Fox and to Katie Raff. Any further comments? All in favor? All right, personally? Any opposed? So. On our new business, I'd like to ask for a consent motion for items eight point zero two to item eight point three two.
Second.
So that motion made in seconded. I know there were a couple of questions relative to.
We've moved out with discussion, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So under eight point zero four for the UPK, uh, I know that there was a, uh, an ongoing issue with some of the children in the district. Uh, some of the students had been, uh, they received notice that they were enrolled and then there was a follow-up letter that they were on a wait list. Uh, we were assured that this issue has been resolved and I just want to clarify that all students who had wanted to enroll, that that is the case.
Good follow-up. Uh, and the answer is yes. Initially, the, uh, sign up was in excess of staffing and facility. But a decision was made to, uh, open two UPK sections and staff it appropriately so that right now all students that had the initial signup are now enrolled in the UPK.
And then I have a question about eight point zero five, the district comprehensive improvement plan. Once this plan is approved by the board, are there, can there be ongoing modifications to it or does it have to be followed with finality as written currently? And then secondly, uh, I see that this was due to be submitted by seven thirty-one with board approval. Will there be a penalty for missing?
No penalty for the late entry. Because, uh, we are now in process at state at the way we should be and need to be. These are living documents and in fact, as we monitor our students, and that's something that our elementary teachers and secondary teachers do very, very well. You, uh, begin with your intervention, you check to make sure that our students are being successful. And if they are, you move to the next stage of the plan. If they're not being successful, the change needs to happen and that's where the plan chain would necessarily occur. That being said, if it requires a fiscal change, we'll have to do some resubmitals with the state. Not changing the plan, but changing the direction in which the money is going and of course you'll know about.
Any further questions on any of the items? All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Under the business office, I'd like to ask for a consent motion for nine point zero two to nine point zero seven.
Got some questions under nine point zero two. Check six, six zero seven six two to Almyra City School District. What could we pay them for?
So I had a very nice conversation with our business manager and we did some thorough checking on all of these specific items. Specifically, uh, six zero seven six two is to the Almyra City School District for adolescent psych, adolescent psychology support, um, and residential treatment.
One, two, zero, six, uh, presentation concepts corporation.
I'm gonna do some basics in the scott. If you want to fill in some of my gaps. This was, uh, payment made, um, for overhead projectors to be located in the steam, fire, band, and auditorium. Other specifics?
No, not yet. And, uh, six zero eight one nine for really great reading. Um, what is our overall financial obligation for the program? I've noticed that she seems to be recurring payments, so I didn't know if we're just getting more materials or if there's a licensing fee.
So kudos to our elementary principal and our elementary staff. They've done, and, and, and again, this is good work. I, I've been here six to seven days and the first thing you learn to ask is what's happening with the reading and what's happening with the writing? And boy, um, we are in a second stage of implementation of writing projects. This specifically is for some initial stages of implementation of the reading curriculum, specifically for curriculum resources related to this program. This is a one-time payment for those resources for this program. But that's not to say, as we continue to evolve this program and grow this program, our teachers are doing a sharp job. So we, we're gonna anticipate that we're gonna have to do some budgeting for next year as we look at stage two and additional resources.
And then under nine point zero five, I just want to clarify that moving the money to this fund would not require additional voter approval.
Correct. All of these funds have already been approved as part of either the annual budget, um, or budgeting process. Uh, so because they've already received public approval and public announcement, they are committed and, uh, the transfer from one fund to the other does not need additional approval.
Do we have a schedule on the boiler replacement yet?
Yeah, so they're gonna be coming probably in two weeks to kind of dry start the boiler and check and see how things are working. Um, and then come back right after Thanksgiving and have everything kind of shorter. Uh, so I would say by, before Christmas, everything will be up. So.
Great.
Um, yeah.
Any other questions, um? All in favor? Any opposed? So... Moving on to discussion items. Cap on food and project events and presentations. I see some dates here, Elementary Open House, number 16. BTSA, are these scheduled? Is somebody intending to be there or who's?
I mentioned that. They're just states I thought someone should be making presentations. I'll volunteer to do the open houses. If we can have a table set up, I could give you some flyers, and anybody have questions, we can come up.
I know I have one this Thursday. Alright, how about I do?
Mike is indicating Craig in here already planning to send to us a setup at football game, just with a poster board and with handouts. No presentations, game on.
Alright, I'll circle, circulate these dates to the board and see if we can get someone to sign up.
And we'll make sure that you have the materials so that you can interact with the community.
Sounds good. There's been some question, I guess, for the October 7th or meeting day?
Currently settled for October 7th. Past practice is we have the board meeting the same day that we would have a vote. So our vote is October 8th. So just need to clarify if we're gonna change the date of the board meeting to the 8th or if we're gonna keep it on the 7th.
I'm personally fine with both. I know, John, you like, I know you don't want to change meetings.
Well, yeah, I prefer not to change meetings. I think the community has a schedule out there for them to remember that if there's a change or tune in when there's a change. We don't want to do that to the community at any time, particularly at this juncture. But if it's something that is tradition, you go with the tradition.
Do you feel strongly either way?
I prefer to keep the meeting as it's published in the calendar.
Yep. Okay. Alright, December 7th stays and the 8th is the CIP board. Any other things to bring to the board and meeting tonight? Alright, we're off and running. Thank you. Cherry, now, motion for adjournment? Second? All in favor? Oh, motion is adjourned.